Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for this Tuesday, October 10, May we have a roll call? Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Here.
Councilmember DeLasso?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
And Councilmember Skilman?
Here.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Will you please all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Next, we will move on to the approval of the minutes and notice of waiving a reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda.
Will you approve? Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let that show a five oh vote, please. I will move on to the announcements for this evening. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Warner Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121 or visit www.sonoma library.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., and by appointment. For more information, call (707) 794-0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com. That's N-I-X-L-E dot com. The city offers a variety of recreation programs for all ages. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. Sonoma County Agriculture and Preservation in Open Space District is developing the Vital Lands Initiative, and the first public meeting will be held on October 12 from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Petaluma Veterans Memorial Building. Come join us in the fun at Kattati's 11th Annual Oktoberfest being held Saturday, October 14 from noon to 6:00 in La Plaza Park. Any other announcements? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to the honorary mayor. Good evening, Taylor.
Good evening to you.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, I'll start off by introducing myself. My name is Taylor Singh, and I'm currently finishing my senior year at Rancho Kattati High School. I've been very involved since freshman year in my school, in my school's activities and extracurriculars, like some of which include the National Honor Society and our school's Save Club where we go to all of our classrooms after school and collect all the recycling, and we also tutor our younger students. I have been competing on our Lady Coopers Golf Team since my freshman year and have also been leading them as team captain for the past three years. I plan to attend a four-year university after I finish my senior year. And outside of school, I love to spend time with my family, doing anything from spending a weekend on the lake to having a backyard barbecue. I currently work at our family business, Firetux Pub, which is also very involved in our community. While being a full-time student and working part-time at our family business, playing varsity sports, volunteering for civic activities, I still manage to have fun and go on adventures with my friends and spend quality time with my family, which is just as important. And I am very excited and honored to be awarded this opportunity and would be thrilled to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. I will start at this end. Wendy? Well, thank you for being here tonight and being our honorary mayor. So, do you have an idea of, sorry, do you have an idea of what you might like to study when you go to university next year?
I have always been interested in being a lawyer. So, yes, I would like to study law.
I'm very sorry to hear that. No, I'm, I'm an attorney also, so.
Really?
I tend to make bad jokes about, about all of that kind of stuff. So, yes, if you'd like any insight with law school or how to avoid debt?
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right. Well, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Taylor, I'm not an attorney, but I still make bad jokes about them, but I'm not going to tonight. I don't want to discourage you from that. So, it sounds like you're seriously busy, doing a lot of different things, and school in and of itself can be hectic and busy. I know, I grew up working in a family business too, and it's really hard when, you know, you want to argue with the owners. I found that never worked really well for me, so I stopped early on. So, you know, one thing I always like to ask is, for, you know, kids your age, if there are things that you'd like to see here in the city, like some kind of a service, and, you know, we get lots of ideas and we can't act on all of them, obviously, but, you know, maybe a little bit of homework would be if, you know, you talk to your friends at school or friends not in school and say, you know, are there some services for teens that, you know, you'd like to see? We do have a recreation department that's up and running again, and, you know, the focus can move around. And also, there's always activities that we can use help on, and I'm sure you're aware of that, but, you know, there's, oftentimes, there's like creek cleanups or restoration projects, planting plants, that kind of stuff, that are really fun, and you really get a sense of ownership, you know? After a couple of years of doing something like that, you come back and look at it and go, wow, I was responsible for that, now look at what's going on here. So, I just wanted to keep that fresh in your mind, too, and I'm sure you're aware of it, but thanks again for being here tonight.
Of course. Thank you.
John?
Taylor, thanks very much for coming. I had the pleasure of being interviewed by you a couple of years ago when you were doing a project for school and talked about city council, so I think it's great that you're participating, and I think law is an admirable profession if you're able to get into that.
Thank you.
And I see all the work that you do, both within the family business and then the school and the sport, so keep it up. Good job.
Thank you.
Well, Honorary Mayor Singh. Typically, you know, when we get the chance to meet honorary mayors, they'll give us a wide litany of things they're involved in. This isn't unusual. And usually, one or two things really jump out, and yet you have such a wide variety of things, it's hard for me to see exactly which is the one to focus on, but I will just, since time is limited, and I'm going to ask you about one. Tell me a little bit about golf and the fact that you're the team captain. Now, how does that process work? How are you selected, and what are your responsibilities as team captain?
So, to be elected as team captain, it's a combination of the coach and the players. So, after they nominated me as team captain, golf is like very a mental sport, so it's very easy to get down on yourself, and you, as team captain, even if you're down on yourself, you have to, by helping the other, like your other players, you really teach yourself and them as well to pick up your spirits, and that really actually helps. So, that's part of my duty as team captain.
That's pretty exciting. I find it interesting, and I think it's pretty, it speaks well that you're selected not only by the people in charge, the coach, but also the people you work with, to get both sides of that equation supporting you. That means you're doing a good job, and I really appreciate the fact that you're working for the morale of everybody. That seems to be an important job, and I think it's the type of skill, if you can build that, that's going to help you in just about everything you do in life. So, thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
I won't cover everything everyone else has covered, but I'd like to understand a little bit more about the Save Club?
Yes.
I've not heard about that.
So, it's a save club. We meet every Monday and Wednesday in one of our classrooms, and we go around with aluminum bags, plastic bags, and then metal, if there's any other, like, like, and we go around to all the classrooms, and we separate each of them, and then we go to return, we go to turn it in, and then the money we actually donate back to. So, last year, we donated to the homeless shelter, but this year, we haven't donated yet because it did just start, but, so, yeah.
And you said something about then reading?
Say that again?
Tutoring?
Oh, tutoring, yeah. So, there's a program at my school where you could tutor mostly freshmen and sophomores, so.
Oh, that's nice, helping the junior, the junior folks at the school along. That's, that's always helpful. I'm wondering, it looks like you have a fan club that you brought with, with you. Would you like to share with us who you brought with you tonight?
All right. Well, right here in the front with the big phone is my mother's son. And then right behind her is my sister Taj Singh. She's also on the golf team with me. And then to the, in the blue jacket, blue-green, is Kayla. She is on volley, she plays volleyball and softball. And then same with Kylie. She's playing fall softball right now. And then Tyler goes to Lawrence Jones Middle School. And then back there is Rudy and my stepdad, and Grammy. They both have really, like, helped me throughout my life, especially in, like, life skills that you really need to know. So, thank you, family, for being here.
Well, I know it's always good to have a good family support system, and judging by all the things that you're involved in and all the ambitions that you have looking forward to, I, I think you're well on your way. And so, I hope that you will bring your fan club back with you in a couple of weeks, and you will be able to do your assignment that was given to you. But thank you, thank you for being here, and thank you for being part of the program.
Of course. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the approval of the final agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Mayor.
No changes? Uh-oh. Someone's going off. Then we will move on to citizens' business and public comment on consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. With that, do you have any speaker cards? No, Madam Mayor? No. Okay. Anyone wishing to speak? Yes, George.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to welcome everybody to the city council meeting tonight, for the people in the audience and for our friends at home who are watching. My name is George Berich. I'm a former city councilman here in Kattati, and I'd like to ask the city council this question. In light of what we've seen the last couple of days, I want to ask you once again what I've asked you for weeks and months and years on end, is what are we going to do about the homeless in Kattati? And I'd like to ask, maybe in a little different way, so maybe you can spark a little creativity in your mind, are there any Democrats in this town that care about the homeless? Put in a different way may help. I've lived here for over 20 years, and not one dime of city money has been allocated for the homeless, homeless project, or even a free ride out of town. No money allocated. We also spoke about Bert Lathrop, who is a property owner here in town last week, and some clarifications from the city manager about what really did happen over that proclamation. And I'd like to ask Mr. Landman, because you made a comment about the shipping container being, maybe having some dangerous contents in it, is that, are the shipping containers over at the St. Joseph's Catholic Church, those two shipping containers, does that concern the council at all? I mean, is there possibly any dangerous contents in those shipping containers that spark your interest, or is it just Mr. Lathrop, who's a Republican and a property owner? I was right about Bert Lathrop not signing those letters that he received from the city. Damien pointed that out. I was right. Vicky Parker, who disagreed, was wrong, according to the city manager. And I would like to ask you, Mr. Landman, I don't understand why you're not, you're not standing up for me like you stand up for city staff. I'm your constituent, too, and I was right. You all picked on Bert Lathrop because, once I explained to him who you were some years ago when you were running for office and what you actually stand for, he asked Carl Schulman to remove your campaign signs off his lot at the Northern Gateway and do it immediately. You can ask Mr. Schulman yourself. And that's what this issue about Bert Lathrop was really all about, a little political payback. And when these meetings are over and the mayor drops the gavel and I start to walk out, I don't want to hear any lame excuses by your city staff members, whether they're barking or they're chirping, whatever they're doing while I'm walking out the door. That's unprofessional. These are open meetings. Any criticism from staff about what the public brings before you should be done on the record. I'll, I'll close it up, ma'am. Please keep that in consideration. It's not the first time it's been done. We've seen the, your police chief walk me out and know what damage the city staff can do. So, let's, let's rein this in. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in citizens' business? Seeing none, I will close citizens' business. Is there anyone wishing to speak on any of the items on the consent calendar? Seeing anyone? Yes? Someone?
Hang on. On which?
The shopping stroll.
Oh, the shopping stroll. Okay. Sorry.
Item B.
Where am I at? Why do I not see?
You get one at a time to be a three on S.
B. Shopping.
Oh, shopping stroll. Yes.
So, okay. Just as a preface to this, I've never been to one of these meetings before.
That's fine.
So, are you guys going to be deciding whether or not this event happens, or is this just to comment on it, just so I understand?
We will be approving the recommendation for having the shopping stroll.
Okay. So, my name is Joseph Rothstein. I've run a business here selling crystals and fossils for about five years. I also run a dinosaur lesson service for kids, and that includes schools, birthday parties, libraries. And I did, well, I guess it was not just my first time, but it was the first time the event happened last year. I've been doing street fairs, antique markets, convention centers, music festivals, every weekend and some weekdays for the past five years. And I'm, of course, biased when I say this, because, like I say, I've participated before, but that event last year was the first event I ever participated in or worked from in Kattati where I, and again, it was probably towards the holidays anyways, but still, the people were in really good moods. I got to talk to a lot of parents and a lot of teachers, got to teach some kids about paleontology right there on the spot. And I'm also a member of the Stone's Throw Gift Shop, there's a bunch of different artists and people contributing, and so I know, I mean, again, as a scientist, so I always preface, there's a bias here, but at the same time, if you make this event happen or let them do it, I've seen street, annual street shows and events grow over the years from other cities around, and it draw, if it works well, it draws a whole bunch of people, it's good for the economy. If there are, if there are good, you know, art or educational activities going on there, that aids as well. And usually, when events happen for the first time, I don't see a lot of interest. People just kind of walk by because it's hard to get things started. But this already got started well. I mean, again, just based on my opinions and past observations, so I would highly recommend you let it happen again because I would wager it's only going to grow over time, and it's going to grow in a positive manner. That's all I have to say on the matter.
Thank you for your comments.
My name's Lynn McDougall, and I'm actually a Penn Grovean, but I work and sell at the Stone's Throw, and I was there for the event last year, and I thought it was very well organized. It was well-supported by everybody. We got a great response from all the people coming through, and I would love to see this happen again. So, I'm just here to speak up for that.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm Michelle Bloom. I live about 10 feet outside of Kattati. I live down East Kattati Avenue. I've been living in the area for 15 years. I experience things through Kattati. I work and live here. I'm an artist in Stone's Throw. I work with Joseph Rothstein. I've been doing shops and markets with him for three years. We've experienced many different markets in the area, up and down Northern California and other states. I've seen different areas that will bring tourists and more local business, more business. This type of show actually has a really good shot at it, and I've personally witnessed it when I went to go help him. Even in the last two hours, people were still strolling by when cars were packing up. People were walking distances just to find the next booth because people, though some packed up early, others remained to the very end. And I, I am biased because I do have my material in the Stone's Throw shop, and he had a booth last year, and I have my material there as well. But I've heard a lot of positive input from other businesses in the area. We were talking to some of the businesses trying to find a way to get the parking to properly fit their business so it didn't harm theirs. They were all for it when they had actual parking. But I, I hope you guys approve it, and it would be fun to have this year.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi there. I'm Karen Marx, and I'm a resident of San Samo, but I work for Agricultural Community Events, who's going to be organizing this event if everything goes through. I help manage farmers' markets and do a lot of the recruiting and event coordination. Just in the last couple of days, I've gone around to about 40 different businesses here in Kattati to talk to them about the event, hand out applications, see where everyone was kind of at, and it seems like there was a lot of people that were very bummed because they thought that the event was not going to happen this year. So, coming around, I know that it was happening. People were very excited. Some people, like I went to a, a music school, what was the name of it? Music to My Ears, and they had wanted to come last year but didn't get in in time, so they were very excited. I think as an organization, we're very good at organizing events and think we could really bring a lot of good energy to this event and hope that, you know, it happens.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Seeing none, I will close public comment on the consent calendar and bring it back to the council.
I would like to make a motion, but I'd like to pull item A for a very quick staff question.
Okay.
But I will make a motion to approve items B, C, and D.
All seconded.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let that show a five oh vote for B, C, and D. And A?
So, item A, this is, I apologize, but with all the chaos of this weekend and that we were all in, I had several questions, but I'm going to narrow it down. I hope that, this is the approval of the Flores Arango Family Birthday Party in Putnam. I don't know if you've spoken to the folks that have applied, but will we provide enough? Because the garbage cans overflow just on a regular weekend, so I was just wondering if we would have maybe some extra service provided. I don't know if it's in the form of a dumpster or something, and I just wanted to bring that up. It's not that I'm disapproving this, I mean, certainly in favor of it, but I just, I had to ask that question of staff, and if indeed that hasn't occurred, if it could occur, that would be a really good thing. It's just something I see all the time on a Sunday afternoon, those cans, even with just one little tiny birthday party, they've gone crazy because they're limited.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks.
Okay.
Well, pass it on.
There is a dumpster out there, right?
It's locked.
It's locked.
It's recyclables only.
Yeah, I think it's just recyclables. Yeah.
Okay.
Which is a good thing. And if there's no other comments, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
I guess we will open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close public item, public comment on this item, and, okay.
So, everybody's looking at me, so I'd like to approve item A on the consent calendar.
All seconded.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let that show, item A passes on a unanimous vote. Then we will move on to direction on future agenda items. Anybody have anything for future? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to the regular agenda. First item is amendment to the city's fiscal year 1718 budget for compliance with the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. I believe we will get a staff report from Mr. Scott.
Yes. Mayor members of the council, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. Tonight's action is to amend the city's budget to include a description of a roadway project that is already in the budget. It's just, there is a law, SB 1, which I'll describe, which requires it to be described a little more fully and that be part of the, the budget. So, that's why we're, we're looking for official action tonight. So, in April of 2017, the governor signed the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017, which goes by the name of SB 1, and that is to address basic road maintenance and safety improvements, rehabilitation of highways and, and the local roads. And the money is from fuel excise taxes, diesel fuel sales taxes, additional taxes there. Excuse me, and vehicle. which goes by the name of SB 1, and that is to address basic road maintenance and safety improvements, rehabilitation of highways and the local roads. And the money is from fuel excise taxes, diesel fuel sales taxes, additional taxes there. Excuse me, and vehicle registration fees. The California Transportation Commission adopted the act subsequent to the governor presenting it, I think so. And what they did was provided prepared guidelines for the cities to go ahead and implement them, and so these, basically, before I get into the project, I'll just describe these requirements. The SB 1 funds go into a, an R M R A account, standing for Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account, I think is what it stands for. And the funds are not to replace general fund money or local, you know, what the city uses its own sales taxes and gas tax monies, it's historically used. And so what the state wanted to see with this act was an incremental increase in city and county spending on roadway, so we would make some headway. And so that's one requirement, and to help ensure that, there is a state controllers report that has very specific requirements on how to calculate each year what the, these municipalities have spent on roadway improvements, okay? And so in fiscal year '09, '10, '10, '11, '11, '12, those are the three years that are sort of the baseline that establishes this maintenance of effort. And so the state, we prepare the state controls report, and then that helps to find that number, and we have to demonstrate every year that we're at least spending that amount. We submit a report by October 1st of each year, because of the way the timing has come around this year, it's going to be October 16th. And that's to be really transparent about the cities, how we're spending this SB 1 money each year, so it's going to have a description of the location of the project, sort of a layperson's description of what it is, so anyone just reading it would know where it is, and that's a road surfacing project or what have you. And it's good, interesting, good to note that the cities have flexibility in changing the project, so this isn't set in stone. We do have to meet the act's intentions, is what these projects are, go towards. It can't be something completely different, has to be a road improvement project, but we do have some flexibility, you know, probably put a reason in there why we switched course or modified the project a little bit in the following year's annual report, so we get that opportunity to do that. And then, again, the project, the funding, and the description, it's got the useful life, has to be, that information needs to be in the city's either adopted budget or amended piece of it. Now, city staff anticipated this, and so when you look in at that item in the revenue piece, there's all of our typical historic sales tax, gas tax, funding that's identified there, and SB 1 is put in there at what the estimated anticipated piece of this year would be from SB 1, which we're expecting to get January 1st of 2018, thereabouts. And that is $41,000, and, you know, approximately. So because it was identified in the budget, we have a $600,000 project that we don't have to make, a $641,000 project. It's, it is, it already includes that SB 1 money. So all we have to do at this point is just sort of add that additional descriptive language in there. Okay, with that having been said, we could talk about the project, and so the city has staff, you know, one of the requirements is to have a certified pavement management program, and that has to get updated every two years. We do have one, it's just getting updated now to keep certified, and what that does is it rates all of our streets, and it helps us, it's a tool for the city to generate projects. So these are annual projects that we're going to keep doing into the future to help bring our, the condition of our roadways, you know, improve them, and stop them from declining. What we have here is the proposed project, which is in the L section of town, and there is, there is some judgment discretion on how we go about identifying a project. You could, the, one strategy is to take the good streets and then do slurry seals to them, which would, it doesn't address any of the poor streets, but it kind of helps keep, keep those good streets from deteriorating. Now that, we decided to take a little bit of a different angle here and use an alternative surface treatment, so that we could take a look at the more poorly, the more poor-conditioned roads, and make, make some headway in getting those addressed. And so this project is looking at the red roadway there, large avenue is a roadway in poor condition, it's got a PCI of 20, well, it's got a really low grade. And then the orange is more the middle, middle poor condition, and that's La Salle from East Qatadi Avenue to where Lakewood, Loretto is, and then, actually, Lakewood Avenue. So from, from here, all the way to the corner here, and then the last section. So what you see up at the top here, that is the SB 1 contribution. Now that's $41,000, you can see kind of relatively how much it contributes to this first year. Now next year, that would go from $41,000 to about $125,000. So we could kind of see how that would be a larger proportion if we continue to do that $600,000 level of effort. Now, classically speaking, these streets would require reconstruction, in which case all $600,000 would probably be spent just in one block. So we're trying to stretch our dollars and use this alternative surface treatment, which means that the roads will not be perfectly smooth, they will have, they will have, bring, you know, reflect what's underneath to a certain extent, we're going to do digouts, crack ceiling, and then, and then put this, this, the surface layer on top. So we'll get it as smooth as we try, we can, but it will, it will have some bumps in it. A good example of that is Old Redwood Highway, that's the similar type of treatment that we would put, now, these are residential streets, so they don't get as beaten up as Old Redwood Highway. So that, that's why the staff is recommending this as an appropriate measure, to get, to get more bang out of our buck. So the resolution that's attached describes this project and includes the required information that the act needs. But that concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Anyone, yes?
Thank you, Mayor. Not so much on this proposed project, but just looking in the future. I understand SB 1 is, you know, it's got road repair in the language, but my question is, kind of a couple, two parts to this. Is there an opportunity to look at something other than a vehicle access road? In other words, can, and I don't know that they can, certain paths fall under this category? Could sidewalks fall into that category, or is it strictly this road as it, as it's normally defined?
Now, now, all road projects in this day and age have some component to encourage bikes and pedestrians, but I can't, I'm sorry, I can't fully answer your question, I would have to go through and see what qualifies as a road. The big push is to maintain that surface roadway for vehicles.
I'm just trying to think if there's, and we've got a whole year to think about this, so I don't need an answer tonight. I'm just trying to think, you know, thinking a little outside the box, is there a broader opportunity that we might have, and is it always the material that is there, or are there alternative materials that could be used? I'm not saying you'd use something other than pavement on a road, I get that, but if the first part of my question is, yes, there's an opportunity to do, let's just say a bike road, a bike lane or something, or a sidewalk, then, you know, are there opportunities to change? Because, you know, I, I hear roads, but I just wanted, I wasn't clear, I tried to look at SB 1, and it was like written by an attorney, and it was really hard to understand parts of it, I didn't mean that in a bad way, I'm just saying. So anyway, just that, that question is for down the road, sorry, Robin, that question is just sort of out there, and I'd love to have a separate discussion with you on that. So that's, that's kind of the really long-winded, two-part question, sorry. And the only other thing I would say is, if we do move forward with approving this tonight, that, because I heard from a lot of people about the Old Red project, and there was, there was definitely some waviness in the road, and then I, I felt that the contractors were at fault for some of the issues, some of the cracks that had occurred and things like that, and I would just encourage us to write the strongest, most specific specifications we can when we go out to bid for these kinds of projects, and I know you guys do, but, you know, sometimes, I know we do these at work, they're just slightly overlooked, and it's like, why didn't I say that? And then it wouldn't have been so much of a problem. So I just wanted to throw that out there as a reminder. Thanks.
Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, let's see, to start with, kudos to staff for being ahead of the game and being ready for SB 1, nicely done. And as far as the state's part of this, I will say personally, I'm, I'm very glad to see the oversight from them for, at least basic reporting requirements for the use of these monies, because the goal here is to really get everybody ahead in their pavement condition index, and make sure that we use it in that manner, and not, oh, we have extras and now we don't have to invest, because the whole goal is to get everybody kind of behind that, from behind that eight ball of being behind the expense of deteriorating roads, which once you get behind it, about impossible to get in front of. So I would guess, we've talked a little about this at SETA, I would imagine there might be some leeway, because most roads do allow some impact for bikes' walkability, but I think they'll be fairly stringent in making sure it's for roads, but nevertheless, there'll be a lot of benefit for the people in Qatadi out of that, so. But what I wanted to ask you about, the question part of this, was going back to Qatadi's PCI. This came up a couple of weeks ago in common here, actually, publicly, and then it was repeated in the newspaper, and it was repeated that Qatadi's roads were all Ds and Fs, and I didn't get a chance to speak to it at the time, but now since we're talking about it again, I wanted to, because I wanted to confirm my understanding in our 2014 pavement management program report was, we were sitting at a 51, roughly. For those of you who don't know, it's pretty much like the grades we used to get in school, there's five of them, it ranges from F to A, only they call it very poor, poor, good, very good, and excellent. And Qatadi is sitting at the very low end of good, 51 for its streets a few years ago, so at worst, that was a C minus then. So first of all, I wanted to confirm that, and then given the fact that we've been doing some investment, I wanted to see if we're moving forward a little bit in that?
Yeah.
Just in general?
I could speak a little to that. It was about 51, 52 from the last pavement management program that we did just about two years ago, and so in October, we had a certified inspector go walk every single segment of our street, streets here, and they've compiled that information, and that reflected the recent roadwork that you mentioned, you know, much of our streets were slurry sealed in 2014, 2015, and then we did all that roadway work on Old Red, Old Redwood Highway, and then through the downtown as well. It, it's bumped up from there, there's a, there's a...
That would have been my guess, I just wanted to hear for sure, because I know at the same time, roads continue to degrade too over time. So with that, I just wanted to bring that out, because I think that's important, I don't know if the press is still here tonight, but I would hope the community voice would pick that back up, because I think the public cares about that, understandably so, and they should know where we're at. Lastly, I'm supportive of option two, I think that's a good idea, otherwise, people who, roads are in very poor shape, for example, in the L section, in other places throughout this town, they'll be stuck essentially forever with that. So this is, this is a good thing, I think, for them, I just hope we can take the lessons we learned from our first pass of this in the downtown and apply that to working with whoever our contractor is for this. So, so thank you for answering that for me, that's helpful.
I just have one question, and I know that on Old Redwood Highway, there was a little bit of problems with that, and I think some of it had to do with the timing. We ended up having that being done, and like a day later, we were deluged with rain like we hadn't seen in forever, and that seemed to cause some issues with the product. So my question is, will we hold the contractor to a better timing? Because it seems like that wasn't a good time to be doing that, knowing that there was a storm, you know, coming, and we didn't know how bad it was going to be.
I think, yeah, that, that will be addressed this time, and, you know, it's difficult to anticipate getting the wettest winter on, on record, but October is typically an okay time, you see a lot of paving happening right now. But we're aiming, we're, we're timing this all to get a project, this project going in April, May, when the, the ground gets warm enough to do a roadway project, so...
I understand it's kind of tricky, not too rainy, not too cold, not too, yeah, it's kind of finicky to get it to cure right and, and to adhere.
I think what we'd see, if it's a really wet spring, we would get the contract all completed and ready to go, but we could, we could put some stipulations in there, I mean, and it's in the contractor's best interest too, to do a really good job, and just wait weeks or maybe even a month until we get that, that good weather to do it. And then traffic control is key too, to make sure you keep cars off of there for an amount of time to let it set. So, yeah, we'll be looking very closely at those specifications.
Okay, any more questions? Seeing none, then I will, oh, you do, okay.
If I understand this correctly, because of SB 1, we need to indicate where we might put those funds and what particular project we're going to have those applied to ahead of time, before we get the funding. And so in our pavement management program that we were looking at, roughly $500,000 to $600,000 per year going forward, I don't know that we had identified this particular area at this particular time.
It's really independent of the specific project you do in any given year, it's saying, hey, overall, over a long period of time, if you consistently put this amount of money into your roadways, you know, you will achieve your goal of improving.
So with the approval of the acceptance of this SB 1 money, we are locking ourselves into this particular project?
Oh, oh, there is some flexibility, as I mentioned, so we would like to hold generally to, mostly to this plan, to that project. If, if it looks not, after further design and, you know, evaluation, that treatment doesn't look feasible, or there's a better one that comes around, then we could move to that, and then in the next annual report, explain why there, that there's a difference. So we're open to new technology and new methods.
Okay.
But, but yes, we, I mean, the idea here is that, yes, we're, we're saying, we want to do and endeavor to do what we're showing.
So in essence, this is more of a placeholder for now, and all things being equal, if, if we decide this is a plan that we want to go with, we're there, but we do have some flexibility down the road, should something else come up, or if a better design opportunity, a technology is available?
Correct, yeah, the, the act does want to be able to say, on its, you know, the state be able to present on its website every year, and be very proud about, hey, these are the roadways in these different jurisdictions. different jurisdictions that this Act has actually funded. And so, we need to connect the dots and say, you know, that $41,000 went to that roadway there. So, you know, we're going to try to do that.
Thank you.
I am glad to see that we're addressing some of the poorer ones, because that's been my concern for quite some time, that we keep hanging on to the ones that are kind of good and keeping them that way, but that we were not addressing any of the poor ones. So, I am glad to see that we're finally addressing some of those. Then, if there are no more questions, I will open this up for public comment. You might have to come back. Mr. Scott? Yes, George?
Thank you for those comments, Mayor. I think those were pretty spot on. I would like to speak to the fact that, if my memory serves me right, the Northern Gateway Road improvements, and just talking about the road improvements, were time-sensitive. And if I remember from the staff report, we had to get those jobs done by a certain time, get the contractors paid and so forth, as required by the grant money. That's the short version. But those types of things entered into this as well, that you have timelines you have to meet. And the public, members of the public did get up and say, and advise the council that they thought that was the wrong time of the year to do that project. But sometimes, you know, these things, these grants dictate a different timeline. I do appreciate it when the council has the integrity to stand up and say, hey, this road was done, and there, and it was a little, it left a lot to be desired, and it was bumpy or crappy, or maybe some words that Mr. Moore thinks is better than those words. But that is refreshing. I mean, that's the kind of thing we want to hear, because we're, this is a team effort. And no one's perfect. Things happen. Weather ensues on these projects and affects these projects. And it's too bad the public isn't applauded when they bring those comments up. But it still should not diminish the fact that we have city leaders who will, at times, step up and say, we could have done it better. It was wrong timing. We'll try to do better next time and so forth. So, and I appreciate the fact that we have some time on this project before you have to make any definite steps. So, I appreciate Mr. DeLosa's comment. Question is to Mr. Scott, where normally I would like you to ask that of our city manager, and then have him get back to Mr. Scott and get to you that answer during the week, so we can streamline these meetings and get you home at a reasonable hour. But the fact that we have that much time for this project, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, Laurie?
My objection to this project is, why are you doing things on the west, or the east side of the freeway, and we're still nothing on the west side of the freeway? You're picking a road that everybody notices, but like Clifford Road and Street in the west side is horrible. Richardson Lane, you have nothing saved up for this pavement project. What I, I've obviously had quite a few days, but what I was looking, you had to, your pavement project had like $900,000 of investment in one year, and you didn't do it. You haven't, you put it all in the downtown specific plan. This is all wrong. We know, I sent you all Caltrans, the west side, you've been delaying all this maintenance, thinking that Caltrans has the local project. You made a deal with the developer of Kattati Marketplace to 2020. And I sent you all this information, that they will do the road repairs between Redway Drive and Alder Avenue. I've sent you the things. You can't wait on $2 million projects. You're putting all of our lives at risk on that West Kattati Avenue turn. Why aren't you spending the money there instead of where everybody will see it? That's all that you seem to care about, not the safety of us West Kattati ones. I mean, you've made this deal. It's been going on since 2008. You've, why did you never mention it, is another thing. With the Kattati, it shows that you, and Damian's name is all over this since 2012. He's, his name is engineer and all that. You blocked, it's, Caltrans does not do the money, because you guys, it's a local project. We're not, we have been blaming Caltrans for years now, waiting, saying we need to wait, well, it was this frickin' city. You know, you guys need to really stop putting people at jeopardy with your decisions, you know? These are lives. People didn't want to volunteer to die to get Caltrans funding, and we found out it's the city. So, you know, I'm just, obviously had a rough day. I have a mock mort evacuate at my house. So, anyways, I had to come down, even though I'm very emotional. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment on this. My understanding on the situation on Highway 116 is that the road in front of the development is a California State Highway. Therefore, we are, it is not our road. So, whatever is developed, we need to work with Caltrans, ourselves, the developers, whoever is involved, to implement the recommendations from Caltrans, because it is their road. So, they look at what it is the needs are based upon what's going to be built. And they tell us what it is that needs to be there. So, that's been known for quite some time when that project came there. And all of the agreements that have happened with the developer have been brought to the city council. Any renewals of those agreements have been brought to the city council. They are all in public meetings. If and when that development ever happens, we will bring it forward again. And, you know, quite frankly, as time changes, the situation changes. So, what Caltrans wants today may not be what they want tomorrow. So, when a actual project comes forward, we will start working on that. And as is typical, when a property develops, there are require, infrastructure requirements that need to be implemented with that. And they are sometimes done by the developer and sometimes done by others, or they're done in conjunction. And that's just, you know, very typical of how that happens. Have I misstated anything on that? Or do you want to add anything on that?
No, that's all accurate. So, that agreement was, I believe, originally drafted in 2008. Of course, approved by council and was amended three times, extended in time. And the reason why that agreement even exists is that when the develop, so Caltrans owns the roadway, it's a Caltrans roadway, it's not a city roadway. We don't control that roadway. When that development project came to the planning commission and council, it was conditioned to improve the roadway. Caltrans has no near-term plan or funding to improve that roadway. But the planning commission and city council had basically required the developer to do it. And the developer, in order for them, so the agreement is just a, it's basically a pass-through mechanism that allows the developer to build and fund that improvement. And that's essentially all it is. And we've kept it alive for the simple reason that it's, Caltrans has subsequently changed the rules on how they reimburse or how they charge for their time when they review these projects. And that older version of the agreement is much more favorable to the city, because they don't charge us the review time. So, that's why we've continued to extend that particular agreement. It does, the latest extension expires in 2018. At that time, we can decide if we want to extend it or not again. If we don't extend it, then it just goes back to where it was before.
Okay. And then, whatever, whenever and whatever gets developed, then that will be looked at at that time? As part of whatever?
Right. Yeah, as part of the impact review of the project.
Okay. Okay. And I also appreciate the comments. You know, sometimes, things don't turn out, you know, the way we expect them. And I think we've had some discussion around that, that we were not necessarily pleased. And I do know that Damian and Craig went back to the contractor and had them do some repair work on that, because we do want to hold the contractors responsible for their work. And, you know, we learned something, you know, new with this new product. And so, hopefully, we'll, you know, stay on top of that a little bit better. But, yes, we do learn from things. With that, any other, yes?
Yeah. Thank you for taking through that. Yeah, I just kind of shared the same experience. I think we've heard this numerous times the last few years, and indeed, this year in these chambers. So, it's nothing new, or certainly no secret. It's a long-term project, like many. It was common that we haven't invested road-wise in the west side. And I just want to confirm, because I live there, so I do remember it, I believe, on our first year of reinvesting back into roads, did we not work on West Kattati Maple and School?
So, Maple was, right, sealed and crack sealed and slurry sealed. West Kattati was overlaid as part of the adjacent development project. That was a condition on their development, basically from Gilman Ranch up to Cohen Court. And then, we did the subsequent water pipe project. I mean, that's not a full road paving, but trench paving, yeah.
Well, that's good. I just want to confirm that. I mean, obviously, there's certainly more to do, but we have been hitting that. So, let's see. And what was the last thing I wanted to say? Oh, yeah. It was suggested we could invest perhaps this money that's going into potentially some pavement protection PCI work, into safety issues over 116. I think I know the answer to this. Number one, legally, could these monies be spent there? Certainly, the SB 1 money, but any of the other monies? And number two, looking at a $600,000 budget, what fractional percentage is that of the amount that would be needed to do something there? I mean, that's a tough question. I guess the point I'm trying to make is, I can't see that happening. And I'm looking for staff to let me know if my perception of that is correct or not.
So, I'll just, Craig can jump in if he has anything to add here. But, so legally, I think it may be able to be spent there. I think Caltrans would love it if we spend money on their roadways.
I bet they would.
But in terms of the amount of money that would be needed, our entire paving budget for the year is less than one-fifth of the cost of what that project would cost.
Yeah. Okay. That's helpful to hear. Yeah, obviously, lots more to do on this, but appreciate that. We'll see where that goes. Thank you.
That brings another question to my mind. Since SB 1, it is going to be giving us some funds, will it also be giving Caltrans some funds, so that they'll be able to improve some of the things that they, will they get a portion of this? Or does it only go to the cities?
Yeah. Craig's looking to confirm, but I do believe that there's a state highway portion in there as well.
So, maybe at some point, as this moves along, and they try and, not only are we trying to improve our city infrastructure, which we're responsible for, hopefully, if the state, i.e. Caltrans, gets more funding because of that, then we may see a little bit more movement on some of the roadway changes that the state owns. Just a thought. So, comments? None? Okay.
With that, I'd be pleased to move adoption of a resolution amending the city's adopted fiscal year 1780 budget to add specific, project-specific information for the city's street construction improvements project to be compliant with the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017, aka SB 1. A second?
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let that show a 5-0 vote. With that, then, we will move on to Item 11B, service agreement with the County of Sonoma for the city to provide landscape maintenance for the Veterans Memorial Hall site. And we have Mr. Scott again.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. So, a few months ago, I was approached by the Maintenance Director over at the county had a proposition for us that the Veterans Memorial Building was awkward for their crews and not very cost-effective for them to maintain. It's an isolated, very small lawn in front of the building. We're not talking about the larger park, which are our properties. We're talking about just the lawn area behind the building and the plants, the shrubs, right around the immediate building. And if we were willing to take that on, if they were to have our contractor, our landscaper, do that work, if they compensate us, and if we can enter into an agreement for that. And so, we, in the subsequent weeks, months, we worked out the terms. And they are, and I also asked our landscape contractor, PJM, what their cost would be to maintain it. And so, they gave us initial cost. And there's a provision in the contract also as those costs, if those costs were to increase over time, that that would be a pass-through. And then, the city is compensated for processing, I think we said quarterly invoices, monthly invoice. We just wanted to keep the cost down for this routine activity. And so, the services list there in the agreement to remove weeds from planters, mow the turf, remove broken or damaged plant material, trim plant material that in the county's judgment has become hazard, blocking drivers' line of vision, pedestrian pathways, et cetera, large limb, and then, we did say, large limb or tree removal is outside of that scope. We didn't want to ask our contractor to do anything that's outside, would be outside of our scope of what we have them do. And then, the last one, 5 report graffiti for the removal by the county, that's something just that city crews would, as they're happening to go by and notice, or we get a call into City Hall from a resident about, we would just go ahead and make that call to the county or send them an email and let them know. So, we're, it seems to staff that this was a pretty straightforward request. And we had city's legal counsel. Thank you, Robin, chime in and make make edits to it. And we had a little back and forth with the county, and we arrived at this agreement here before you. So, it's been vetted out and thoroughly thought through. And that's what staff is recommending, is that council authorize the city manager to execute this agreement. Thank you. That's, I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Questions?
No.
No?
No question.
No? And I will open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on the side? No? Seeing none, I will bring that back to the council. It's interesting, when I drove by today, the crew from PJM was enjoying their lunch at the park benches there at the Veterans Memorial Building. So, that was interesting. So, basically, as I understand this, it's really a pass-through for us to perform this service. And I guess with that, we sort of get some say of what our city looks like.
I think...
Versus having them, you know, let it go and not take care of it.
Both of us really acknowledged, and he admitted from the county, that it would be an improvement to have this regular maintenance. It's something that was sporadically done by the county. And so, just because it was, it is difficult to work into their schedule. And so, our contractor's already here, and it was no problem for them to work this in.
Economy of scales.
Yeah.
The county has had difficulty maintaining their veterans' buildings throughout and subsequently contracted with some nonprofits and did not have the desired result. So, I think with the contract that we had with our landscaper and the work that they've done... So I think with the contract that we have with our landscaper and the work that they've done, I think it's pretty good. And I would support this.
Yeah, yeah, because I always think it's really interesting, because I think that a lot of people don't really understand that the veterans' buildings are controlled by the county. I think a lot of times, people think that they are controlled by the city, but, but they're not. They live in our cities, but they are actually controlled by the county.
Madam Mayor?
So-
Yeah, I support with this. I think, you know, obviously, what we've seen in the last decade, you have the best approach to governance is to help everybody else in the community where you can. And there's two good reasons for it here. And then number one, it's going to save everybody a little bit in costs. It'll be, we'll get a better result. It'll save the county some money. And next time around, it might be us needing a favor from the county to streamline something for us where they can help us. So I, I'm very pleased to see this come through. And the pass-through information was good to hear, too, because that was the one question I had with this. Was this an ongoing rolling cost? Was 87.50 a quarter appropriate? How would that work long-term? And you've pretty much resolved that. So I'm glad to hear that City Attorney Donio hammered the county behind the scenes and got this whipped into shape. Nicely done. With that, I'd be very pleased to move an intergovernmental service agreement with the county of Sonoma for landscape maintenance for the Katati Veterans Memorial Hall site and authorize the city manager to execute said agreement.
A second? I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let that show a 5-0 vote. And the next item is information received after the agenda was posted? Oops, I'm sorry. Oh, goodness. It's been a rough week, sorry. Oops, falling apart here. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So first off, I just wanted to pass along that with the fire response, in, in particular in Santa Rosa, we've, we had four officers, Katati officers, go up and assist on Monday morning. They're primarily helping people, or knocking on doors and getting people out of their houses in the path of the fire. And also, we continue, our officers continue to assist Santa Rosa police with patrols. And these are largely in areas that have been evacuated, just to prevent any sort of looting of evacuated areas. So we're actively engaged with the police presence up there. So that continues. And then, construction updates. I'm sure you all have seen all the cones and construction material here on East School Street. And the curb was poured, and the sidewalk is currently going in. It's partially in right now. So it'll be in there, and the formwork off, I'm sure, in the very near future. And then on recreation, everybody should have gotten their second activity guide in your mailboxes. And we have a fall, for fall slash winter. And it has all of our upcoming program offerings. And then you'll see another one in the springtime, so twice a year, all these rec guides coming out. And then also, October 31st, as was mentioned before, children and families are invited to stop by City Hall for some pre-trick-or-treating, trick-or-treating, and show off their costumes, and hopefully have fun here with all of us. And we're also hosting a Thanksgiving break camp, Monday through Wednesday, the week of Thanksgiving, for children to have a fun place to go while their parents still have to work that week. And then finally, we're also currently accepting applications for vendors to participate in our annual holiday tree lighting and craft fair, which is December 1st on Friday, which would be followed, given the council approval earlier this evening, would be followed on that weekend by the shop and stroll downtown. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Did we, did we already have our first parents' night out?
Yes, it was-
And how did that go?
So it was, it was scheduled, but with the, with the fire and everything going on with that, we ended up putting out the word that we're just going to postpone it, because it didn't seem like a good, it turned out to not be the greatest date night. So we rescheduled it for, for later.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Okay, thank you for that. We will move on to city council member reports. John? We'll go this way.
I have nothing to report out, Mayor. I do have a request that maybe we would close our meeting with a moment of silence in recognition of those that have suffered this tremendous tragedy recently. And that would be it. Thank you.
I would agree very strongly with that. And also, I just want to remind everybody one piece of information. Sonoma Clean Power has drive evergreen offer for helping people. Significant reductions in costs, both on the dealer's side, manufacturer's side, as well as some money in back from Sonoma Clean Power to help people get into electrical vehicles. Ends October 31st. So if you're in the position this year where you could use a new car, there's a wide range. There's some short-range ones, and there's even the new Bolt, which I think has over 200 miles easily. So if it works out for you, this is a good deal for the public, if you're in time to do that. So I don't know if we're going to be able to do it next year or not. So I would encourage anybody who's interested, call Sonoma Clean Power. They'd be happy to help you with it.
Thank you. Wendy?
I'll just comment that I know from personal experience now that the Chevy Bolt gets up to 280 miles per single charge. But I have nothing else to report out.
And I have nothing to report out. Thank you.
Okay, I have nothing to report out either. So, public comment on non-action agenda items? Yes, sir?
I noticed, I live off Page Street, I moved here in 2015. And I noticed a lot of people camping on Page Street. And my whole reason I came to this meeting, and I sat through the whole meeting and heard everybody, is to bring my concerns about, I have two kids, my daughter's six, my son is two. And they're loitering, they're, you know, changing on the streets, they're leaving their garbage behind. And I just want to bring it up to the city, be more cops to roll by, because it's really obvious, you know, it's big vehicles with currents on the windows, and see what we could do about it. Because Page Street is a very peaceful street, except when they're around. You know, like I said, they leave clothing, trash, beer cans, glass. So it's really concerning, and that's the whole reason. This is my first meeting since I moved to Katati in 2015. And, you know, I just had enough, you know, basically. So I came forward to see what you guys could do and what I can do on my part to change it. So that's just my concern.
Thank you for your comments. We will have the chief, he's shaking his head this way, speak with you. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, for clarification? When you're talking about camping, you were talking about RV camping?
Uh, both are these, and it's still, I guess, from what I understand, is what the term is. So basically, people that are in their cars, and I understand in time of our, but, you know, when parking's already an issue, and I have to come home from work, and it's a big park, I literally lie down here to my house because they think, you know, the shady or the spots closer to my home, that's going to become my issue. You know, obviously, I don't care what's going on in the life, you know. Everybody has to do what they need to, to survive, and I get that part. But you know what, it's not affecting my life and my kids' life, that's not to get involved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on non-action agenda items? George?
I'd like, council, I'd like to speak on future agenda items. This issue of the homeless in Katati, I brought this up during Citizens Business, and there was no council comment on that issue. And then on future agenda items, there was no motion to put anything on a future agenda. And it's October now, and we have a lot more homeless in Sonoma County than we did have a few days ago. And we're going to have, we possibly could have another very wet winter. We could have a very, very cold December and January. And I'm still shocked, after all the times I've come before you, no one has suggested putting on a future agenda what you're going to do to replace the homeless parking program that was canceled a few months ago. I, I'm really shocked, because I've heard some concern from the council that they wanted to make some small step. Yet, we're kicking this down the road again. Also, Mr. Landman spoke about the need to, to abate that shipping container that Burt Lathrop had. You know, that maybe the city didn't know what was in it, maybe there was something dangerous inside there. And I find that interesting, because there's no concern for any of the other shipping containers in town, like at St. Joseph's Church. And I know unless we have probable cause to get in there, all we can do is kindly ask the owners of those containers, can we take a peek? Because God knows, you know, we don't know what you might have in there. And there's no, there's no indication that the city is concerned about any of the other shipping containers that have been locked for years. And if you're concerned, let's do something about it. Let's go to the church and ask them if they'd like to open that up for us and take a look. And also regarding the turn at West Katati Oaks and Grabenstein Highway, that intersection is clearly indicated in the downtown specific plan. And if you look at that plan, there's a big roundabout sitting there, and there's another roundabout sitting down at the next, at Redwood Drive. And it's a beautiful plan, and even though the roundabouts have been outlawed, it's in our plan. And if we come up with the money, or the developers come up with the money, we have a plan. It's going to be changed because of the, of the new law. But it was, it was Mayor Janet Curvers who had said she would really like to see the city put the first roundabout at West Katati Avenue and Grabenstein Highway. So there must be some confusion between city officials and city staff, what our responsibility is out there, who owns that property? Because even going back to Janet Curvers and the council who put that downtown specific plan together, we have all kinds of plans. And that's a, that's a large document I'd like you to look at and see it for yourself. And just clarify for us, because we spent a lot of time designing that, and the council was very clear that we want that, that area to look the way we want it to, not how Caltrans wants it to be developed.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Laurie?
This is on future agenda items and Damian's report. The, I'm, he mentioned fire. Well, first, okay, first, the homeless issue, we have been bringing, George and I have been bringing up all year, and you have not put anything on the agenda. It's obviously not a big issue to all of you. Anyways, I'm, you need to be in the real world and deal with real things, like I have been today. Fire hazards and fire plans, we knew nothing. We have, we got no help from the city. We got no, nothing. We have a Oakmont, there's people on our street that have taken in people, evacuees, and we got nothing from the city for 24 hours. I sent an email, and the police sent one out, and NICSAL out. I hear Nextdoor Mark sent me a horrible email blaming, of course, you know, trying to make excuses, which you guys are really good at. But you didn't offer anything to any fire victims. You didn't do anything, you could have, the children were home today from school. They'll be home tomorrow. I know that, my brother's teacher. You know, you didn't, you could have said, come on in, if you haven't, if the people you evacuated have, have needs. You did nothing. You didn't put anything on the website, city's website. You did, you know, you just need to be in reality of what is really happening out in the world. You know, half the restaurants in, in Rhoda Parker closed down. People are out there having masks on. You could have put, gave out masks, you know. You could have done something. You did nothing. Other than I hear now the four police officers, but we didn't know that. You know, we get Christine Ott sent the, the dispatcher sent out an email from the police. But other than that, we heard nothing. And I'm tired of being alone and fighting for people, real citizens. We really needed your help, and you weren't there.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak? Damian, do you have any comments? Well, I mean, I know you guys were like really busy the last couple of days, helping. I know, you know, some of us all helped in our, in our own ways. You know, I, I gave things and I, you know, made sure that people could go do volunteer work that couldn't do it, made sure others were taken care of. So, you know, I, I think that, you know, we all do what we can to do. And, you know, some people, you know, don't necessarily feel that they need to put that out there. Maybe some people do feel they need to put that out there. So I think it's very personal. And, but I do know that we care, and I do know that we, you know, handle these things all differently. And I know that people have done things to help where they can.
Yeah, I, I'll just add that you do hear lots of stories throughout Sonoma County and throughout Marin County and the North Bay of, you know, families or complete strangers taking in people, you know, that are displaced by the fire. And as far as the, as far as the city's role, I mean, we touched on it a little bit with, you know, our help with the law enforcement side of things. We are, we are participating in all of the emergency operations calls that the county holds. And that's the, that's the forum where all the agencies coordinate shelters, materials, supplies, who needs what, and, and help out, you know, in a joint coordinated way. And so, you know, we're, we're actively engaged in those every day and, you know, assisting in any way that, that any other agency's asking for at this point, to do it in a coordinated way. And, you know, just as an aside, I was talking to the, the Assistant County Administrator in Marin County. And, and she was telling me that they've, and I don't know how many people they've actually had stay overnight there, but they had at the Marin Civic Center, 700 people from Sonoma County there. And I think it's largely people just trying to get out of the smoke and just get away from the fires in general. So you're seeing, it's not just a Sonoma County thing, it's a, it's a North Bay thing. And also, you know, I don't want to forget that Napa Valley is, you know, facing a very similar situation. So you see a lot of, there's a, there's a lot of activity throughout the North Bay and the northern part of the Bay Area, so. And, and one other thing I just will say, in terms of communication methods, we do have a website posting on our headlines that we use. And we do Facebook, and we do Nextdoor, and we do NICSAL. So we communicate in all those ways.
Madam Mayor? I mean, I can add that since Saturday, sometime on Saturday, I have six to eight, depending on how you want to count them, NICSAL alerts from Katati PD. Certainly significantly larger number from Sonoma County Sheriff's Office as well. But that's just from the Katati Police Department related to the fire. And additionally, even out as far as West Marin, we had over 150 people who had evacuated from predominantly Sonoma County, not so much Napa. So, yeah, I think everybody is, is pulling their share. And, you know, however we get the word out, you do it. But sometimes it's more important to focus on the protection of lives and property, if you can, than worrying about saying, here's what we just did.
Yeah, I think that's been, that's been some of the, you know, the frustration. I, I saw it immediately. I watched the sheriff's briefing this afternoon. And, you know, as the briefing was happening, people were posting on there. And I think that, that people were just so taken back by this, and it was just so intense, so quick, that people's emotions are just really raw, and things that they would say or do, you know, are coming out in ways that they normally wouldn't. People are frustrated because they want more information. But, you know, as Councilmember DeLloso pointed out, they're still trying to save people. So, you know, that, you know, every life that they save is important. And, yeah, it's frustrating, because people want to know more. But, you know, I think it's important that we take care of, you know, lives and properties as best we can and, and kind of report where we can. But I do understand- report where we can, but I do understand it's so frustrating for people, and it's really, it, it, it's hard to find sources, and, and you just kind of have to do the best you do. What I found was most interesting, and oddly the most helpful, was, you know, the whole neighbor helping neighbor. A lot of information, you know, was happening on Nextdoor, just an interesting little thing that I saw on there, there was someone whose daughter lived out of the area, and they were worried about a relative that they had here in Katati. Someone else jumped in and said, "You know what, I'm not doing anything, give me the address, I'll go check on him." And they did, and he did, and he came back on and said, "No, he's fine, he's all taken care of," just, as a matter of fact, he was out walking his dog, probably not a good thing to do, because the air wasn't very good, but, you know, it's that neighbor helping neighbor, and, and I've seen a lot of people, you know, jump in when someone says, "Oh, I think this is happening here." Someone will really help by going in, you know, seeing, you know, and kind of checking on that, so, but anyways.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I got a few comments, but I might as well start with what we're talking about, I think that makes sense. So, the morning of the fire, as you were still traveling, I was down at the police station at 7:30, just, my daughter had heard a rumor that Katati was being evacuated, and since I had not heard this, I was understandably concerned, so I thought I'd go out and just take a drive around town and check things out, as you should. And I want to report that the police station was open, our dispatchers were very busy, but they made time to share information with everyone who came in. There was a lady sitting in the foyer with a suitcase, a bag or two, in a big old boxer, very friendly, fortunately, who was sitting there, and I talked to them for a minute. Her husband was a firefighter, had dropped her off there for safety when he was called out to fight the fires, and I suggested they could go in the community room at the police station, which might be more comfortable, and she said, "No, there's people sleeping in there right now." So we were providing services. This whole suggestion that perhaps we aren't doing our, our part, as we should as a city, I, I think is, I don't know why anybody would assume that from the beginning, and it certainly isn't the case from what I've seen. As we know, our officers were being part of mutual aid, as we should, in helping out with that. And in terms of providing information to the public, granted, there's not as much need here as there has been for our friends in the northern part of the county, where it's been very important, and perhaps it's best we don't try to take too much bandwidth, because there's, there's nothing good to come of that, but we've posted numerous times on Facebook, on our homepage, we have a link to information, we've posted on Nextdoor, and we've been all over Nixal as well, too, so I think that's just completely incorrect. We were asked to face reality, and the reality is quite simply, we've been doing what you would expect a city to do, and trying to help out in this difficult situation. I was asked about shipping containers. There are shipping containers in other areas, I've noticed. I have more concerns about ones that appear less managed or observed, I wouldn't call it abandoned, but without somebody directly there. I mean, I see shipping containers, I walk through our shared neighborhood, and gosh, there's a backyard right really close to where you live. Matter of fact, it's actually your house, has a whole bunch of shipping containers in there. I have no idea what's in there, but because I know you're there managing it, I'm not bothering to call the police. However, something in the downtown like this, where there's nobody really there to watch it, I think we're probably, if we're doing the public what we should do, we should probably err on the side of caution. I think that's always a smart thing to do, so I will continue to feel that way about those sorts of things, but it has nothing to do with Mr. Lathrop, who I happen to like very much, the one time I talked to him, and I could care a whit about his politics, whatever they may be. Lastly, camping over in Page Street in Ramble Creek. I would agree, we're very supportive as a council, supporting the county's parking program that they wanted to partner with us on, and it's unfortunate they withdrew the funding from that. If they can get that funding back, I, I personally would be happy to support it, but this is not an authorized, authorized location, and this was why it isn't, because it just doesn't work, it creates hardship for the neighbors, so I do hope we can work through the police department to do something about that, I think that would be beneficial for the community. Perhaps we can get people directed to better services that way, too, if we have interactions through the police department with them, I think that would be a good thing.
Yes?
I was just going to ask, add briefly, too, with everything we've had going on in the county, it's just been overwhelming. One of the bright sides is that we went to Annalee High School yesterday, my family and I did, to volunteer, and we added our names to the list, but there were a good 25, 30 people already on the list, and many of them were offering, you know, we have space in our homes, we have a room available, pets are okay, or, you know, whatever the situation was, they were giving the parameters and putting their phone numbers down, and so it was just amazing, and actually, I understand now that they're already consolidating, and they make, they're planning on closing the Annalee High School as an evacuation site, because there's so many other services available. My son and his friends were really looking to try to volunteer somewhere, and they were calling all around, and actually, everybody was saying, "Well, maybe if you came at eight, or maybe if you came at nine, or actually, we're okay for tonight," or, I mean, it's, it's amazing, and so I'm really proud and impressed of how people are able to put aside any differences and just focus on the basic human needs that we all need to deal with every day. So I'm really impressed with how our county has stepped up and people are helping each other, and the fact that they're turning away volunteers, I mean, that's pretty incredible, they've got enough, it's better to have more than not enough, so. Anyway, just wanted to end on that note.
All right, with no other comments, if you would all please, as was suggested, you know, my heart goes out to everybody that has been impacted by this. My thoughts and prayers are with everyone, and if everyone could just join me in a moment of silence for all those in need right now, I'd appreciate it. Okay, thank you very much for that, and with that, we will adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you.